I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Hold on one minute. Sorry. Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Our invocation tonight will be presented by Pastor Dexter Thomas from the Fairfield Community Seventh Adventist Church. Pastor?
And a proud Clergy Action Network member. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's pray, family. Our Creator, our Savior, our Redeemer, great God of life, God of love, we thank you for a place and a space where prayer can be heard, where we believe in surrendering to a power bigger than ourselves. We pray your favor and your guidance on these deliberations. And we thank you that 2,000 Easter Sundays ago, you rose from the grave to give us life, liberty, and love, healing, help, and hope. We bless you for this. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, so tonight, I'm going to ask the seat. Councilwoman Panduro, would you lead us in the pledge?
... pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Amen. All right, we're going to go to council reports, and we'll start with Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Full council chamber today. So in my report, Councilmember Scott Tonison took me on a ride-along. That was a lot of fun. We went through all of the districts, but he was, he rides around districts a lot. He's a former appraiser and knows Fairfield quite well. So not only did he show me some really cool areas of Fairfield that I've never been to, but some areas of concern in my district. And Scott, you're just a good time. Also, Saturday was really special. We go to a lot of events. There were three on Saturday that I went to that I want to highlight. One was the Afro Revolution, produced by Michael Threats. He used to be Solano Library Supervisor, was bullied and attacked online, and is now a PBS content creator, supporting literacy. And so he had this event at the Fairfield Civic Center Library, and to be a black woman with an Afro and walking into a space where there was wall-to-wall books like this one was pretty amazing. As a 54-year-old, to just have that feeling come across me with so many people of all ages and ethnic backgrounds, to be in that room taking in these books was pretty remarkable. Only to be followed up by a nonprofit event that I attended at Bethel. Executive Director Loretta Gaddis had an event, Love the Skin You're In. So, and that focuses on girls. So that was pretty amazing. And then the final fifth event for me on Saturday was the annual scholarship event of the... the Skigee Airmen. And there, we got to, at the Fairfield Hilton, celebrate Black military excellence. So Saturday was a very full and amazing day. Thank you. My report is complete.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Councilman Tonison?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to a bunch of different things the last couple of weeks. You know, as councilmembers, this is a busy time of year for us, so we do go to a lot of events. But I'll just mention the one that I've been going to since I was five. Somebody will probably do the math, but it was the 57th Easter egg hunt of the Kiwanis of Fairfield, and they hold it at Lebel Park every year. And they had to do it in the playground this year because, you know, the lawn was pretty wet. But thank you Fairfield Kiwanis, and keep it up. That's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Vaccaro?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. So just a couple of things really quick. Our Cap Solano meeting last Thursday, the board, myself and Councilwoman Panduro, sit on, we approved the staffing memorandum, so, which means it will come back to our council for a vote. So we will finally have some staff on our Cap Solano board, which is really important. And also, I just wanted to see if I can get a second. I'd like to agendize looking into authentic the license over there on Hilton, you know, the road there?
Yeah, yeah.
On Martin Road, just to see, because it's been, it's been a couple of years now, and there's absolutely nothing going on there.
Who agendized that?
Sounds good? Second? Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. That's my report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just share, so every couple of months, because we are fortunate to have Travis Air Force Base within our city boundaries, we are invited on base for a civic leader's breakfast every couple of months. So elected leaders, civic leaders, community leaders are all invited, and we get to have breakfast and hear from the different units of the Air Force. And so this just happened last week, and I was able to attend along with Councilmember Tonison and the City Manager. And so I just wanted to bring up one thing real quickly. When the security forces gave their report, they gave major kudos to our police department. They've had a lot of, we just had, recently had the airshow, as many of you may have attended or heard or watched from home. And then they've also had a couple of protests. And so they just wanted to give major thanks to Fairfield PD for all the work that they do in collaboration with the base, because we know what they do on there is very important, and they are very important to not only our community, but our state, international and internationally as well. So they just shared gratitude that they're able to work such, so closely and so collaboratively with the Fairfield PD. So thank you Fairfield PD for all that you do with the base. And then, second, I just wanted to give an event update. So as I had recently shared, I adopted, along with Fairfield PD, portions, well, pretty much all of North Texas for cleanups. And so this Saturday, we are having our second Adopt a Street cleanup. It is, so this is, that's this Saturday, April the 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00. And we're meeting at the PAL Center, which is located on 2250 North Texas. And again, that's 9:00 to 11:00 this Saturday. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for showing up and taking the time to attend this meeting this evening. We always have a better City Council meeting when we have our residents and community members actively engaged with the City Council. And I know it takes a lot to get down here, 6 o'clock, dinnertime, kids, all that stuff. So thank you for being here. We appreciate you. And I'm going to keep it very short in the interest of hearing the discussion from our residents. I just want to say that the Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield CAN, is organizing the National Day of Prayer for the city of Fairfield, which will be held on May the 2nd at 11:30 a.m. here in this council chamber, May the 2nd, National Day of Prayer. The National Day of Prayer we had last year was amazing and filled with the Spirit. So it is a great time to come down and to have some corporate fellowship and prayer. May 2nd, City Hall chambers, and the Liberty Church and City Church are the CAN members who have stepped up to the plate and volunteered to coordinate efforts to get all that done, along with, along with city staff. And so I want to thank those two organizations for taking the lead on the National Day of Prayer this year. And I also want to thank staff for a meeting that I attended at Paradise Valley Estates this past Monday, along with Mayor Moy and Councilmember Tonison and Councilmember Vaccaro. I learned that there are transit issues at Paradise Valley Estates in terms of the workers and the residents getting public transportation, their ability to get around the city. What I didn't know, which I learned Monday, is that Paradise Valley Estates is the sixth largest employer in the city of Fairfield. That was pretty amazing. So staff did a great job, gave a great presentation, and fielded the questions and answer session. So bottom line is, we're looking to put our heads together and see what we can do as a City Council to facilitate increasing transportation for our Paradise Valley Estates residents. And many of those residents are also veterans. And so looking forward to having some more discussions on that. Madam Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Councilman Doug.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here. I don't have a report this week. I was out of town last week, so I do not have a report.
You could tell us about your trip.
Well, I want to continue my education in substance use disorders and mental health for a week.
Amen. All right, so I'll go ahead and give my short report. First thing I want to say is thank you for all being here. And I want to remind you that this is obviously a council meeting, so I don't want to be talking out of line. I don't want any clapping. If we could hold that, that'd be great, because we are overflowing here. So I'd appreciate that, so we can get through this very much. Thank you. Then the one thing that I wanted to say was this, two things, actually. First, I wanted to give kudos to some of our officers and to first responders. This last Saturday, a person stopped breathing, his heart stopped at one of our facilities. And there was a nurse, an off-duty nurse there, who immediately went to save this person's life and started CPR. And then Officers Gassen, Orsi, and Livermore showed up, and they all worked as a team, the four of them, and were able to shock the heart and continued CPR. And they, and then also medic, and our folks on our fire engines, the medics there, saved this person's life. And so, big kudos. They train for these things like they train for a lot, and we appreciate them. And I hope that we will bring the nurse forward too, so we can talk about her and what a hero she is. So I thank them for that. Then the last thing that I want to talk about is tomorrow, the city puts on our Hope Resource Fair. This is our homeless outreach partnership engagement, and there'll be food, Medi-Cal, CalFresh services, veteran homeless services, vaccines, and microchips for animals for our homeless friends, and then also bike raffle, mobile showers, and much, much more. This will be at Bay North Church of Christ, and it's tomorrow from 10:00 to 2:00, and this is always a great event. And Bay North is at 2100 Pennsylvania Avenue, Fairfield, and we say a big thank you to Pastor Sam Morris for his work on this. And that's all for me tonight, and how about you, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I'll be real brief. So, you know, we are members of the League of California Cities, which is an advocacy group for city government at the Capitol in Sacramento. I sit on a Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee for the League. We had a meeting of that committee talking about what the priorities were for the League here in this next year. I had a very interesting presentation from Caltrans. In the, over the next decade, Caltrans projects, or I'm sorry, the Legislative Analyst Office projects that the state of California is going to see a reduction of gasoline tax by, on the level of about $5 billion per year. By 2035, the state of California, if all that legislation stands, no more internal combustion engines would be sold in California. And so as vehicles are getting much more fuel efficient, and there's a pretty rapid shift to electric vehicles, the way in which we collect revenue to maintain our roadways is quickly dwindling. So the road charge is a concept that Caltrans has been studying now for a few years. You can go to caroadcharge.com. There's a lot of information, the studies that Caltrans has did. And ultimately, a road charge is a paid, paid... And ultimately, a road charge is a pay, pay-by-mile system that would basically get rid of gas tax. So the intent at some point in time would be to totally eliminate gasoline tax and instead implement a, a per-mile charge for use of roads for all passenger vehicles under 10,000 pounds. So, very, very interesting information, and certainly concerning as we know that roadway maintenance is, is expensive and the revenues to do that are dwindling. There is no legislation right now in the legislature being proposed in order to switch to the road charge yet. But I suspect in the next couple of years, that's going to be a serious conversation, because without it, our roads will simply continue to get worse and worse and worse. So, that's my report. Madam Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. And Madam Clerk?
Just to add to what you said regarding the HOPE event, our homeless services manager, Samantha, mentioned that Route 3 on the bus is free for anyone attending. If you just tell the bus driver that you're going to the HOPE event, Route 3 is free.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so, is that it for you?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Now we turn to presentations.
Bay Delta Conservation Plan Water Impacts presented by the Solano County Water Agency. And Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor Moye, Fairfield City Council members. Get this teed up here. All right, Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director at the city's Utilities Division. With me here tonight, co-presenting is Alex Rabidu. He's the Assistant General Manager for Solano County Water Agency. We're pleased that he's here to help kind of guide us through some of the details of the Bay Delta Plan and the alternative for the voluntary agreements. So this item before you tonight requires no formal action, is intended to inform you all of the status of the state's effort to update the Bay Delta Plan, as well as describe a less imposing and preferred alternative called the voluntary agreements. Over the next several minutes, we'll be covering a fairly complicated topic in a short span of time. To the extent possible, we'll conclude by answering those questions that we're able to answer. Other questions you have may be more appropriate for state staff. But also keep in mind that there may be some questions that they're not even capable So as I see it, tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to six questions. First, we'll give a high-level definition of-
Could you please silence the phones? Thank you.
Thanks. So first, I'll give a high-level definition of water resource management and our role as a city-owned utility within a much broader view of the state and region framework. Second, we'll give a brief overview of the Bay Delta Plan. Next, we'll describe what local water storage consists of, and by that, I mean Lake Bariessa, and how it's currently allocated. Next, we'll explain what state staff are seeking to achieve through taking of our local water storage for their purpose with this round of Bay Delta Plan updates. Next, we'll outline the effects to Fairfield and, and the other Solano County cities. And finally, we'll describe a more viable alternative called the voluntary agreements, now referred to as the Healthy Rivers and Landscape Program. So as we set the stage, I want to spend a brief moment to remind folks that the city of Fairfield has access to two different water sources. Generally speaking, our water sources are the Delta, which is State Water Project, and Lake Bariessa, which is Solano Project. We, as a municipally-owned water utility, are engaged in, in retail water sales, the water supply for which is obtained through a wholesale water agency. In our case, we deal with Solano County Water Agency and Solano Irrigation District as the wholesale agencies. I like this illustration because it demonstrates the multiple and oftentimes competing interests in managing a scarce resource. As you can see, we at the wholesale and retail level occupy a narrow interest amongst a vast set of watershed collaboratives. It's also helpful to know that SQUA is more than just a wholesale water agency. Among other duties is our wholesale water supply. They also engage in dam operation with Solano Irrigation District, floodplain and land management, habitat restoration, and legislative advocacy, among other core business functions. So the state water, the state water control, Water Quality Control Board of the Water Board is vested with the authority to regulate and govern water quality for the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, which otherwise referred to as the Bay Delta. The Department of Water Resources manages the state's water infrastructure and facilities, as well as conducting habitat restoration, among other responsibilities. The California Natural Resources Agency exists to restore, protect, and manage the state's natural resources and has over 25 distinct departments, conservacies, and commissions. Participant agencies include those local agencies and irrigation districts, but in some cases include the Department of Water Resources and the United States Bureau of Reclamation, which is what the Solano Project is, a bureau project as opposed to a state water project. I'm going to turn it over to Alex Rabidu. He's the Assistant General Manager for Solano County Water Agency. Alex will go into the more detail about the Bay Delta Plan and an alternative to the state's misguided proposal.
All right, excuse me. Good evening, Council. I apologize, my voice is on the way out, so I will certainly do my best here. So I apologize in advance here. As Michael said, really the goal of, of the presentation today is going in a little bit of detail about the Bay Delta Plan and what that really means for the Solano agencies, and in particular, for the city of Fairfield. And again, just, just how drastic what is some of the things that the state is proposing. To give a little bit of an idea, Michael touched a little bit on the State Water Resources Control Board. That's essentially a state agency really geared toward protecting water quality across the state and allocating water rights. They're also, in a sense, kind of a regulatory agency. So they make up, in a sense, make up laws, and then all, as local agencies, we're required to follow those. Getting a little bit more specific with the Bay Delta Plan update, it's really designed to protect water quality by flow standards. And so, the state board doesn't have a lot of tools at their disposal, and so what they really are, are looking at is all the agencies across the Sacramento-San Joaquin Valley mandating more flow into the Delta. And their focus really is for protecting fish and wildlife. However, you'll see, there's a, a bit of a dichotomy where, again, it's not really looking at municipal needs for cities, as well as the agricultural needs throughout the, the Central Valley. What the state board is proposing is what's called 55% unimpaired flows. So imagine in Lake Bariessa, that's really, if you will, it's sort of like the savings account for the Solano region. It saves water during the winter, and then solely allocates it throughout the, throughout the summer months when water's not available. The state is really proposing about a little over half, 55%, would be mandated to flow in the wintertime, all the way out through the Delta into the Bay Delta, out to the ocean. So it really would not be able to be used by our communities, but would be actually sent out to the Bay Delta. The, the state board is also looking at cold water protection, and this is for a species such as salmon, steelhead, that, that actually require cold water through their life cycle. To give a little bit, and certainly, my background's engineering, so certainly we'll try not to bore people here, but, but I'll, I'll try to at least give, give folks kind of a picture of, for Lake Bariessa, what is the, again, what is the portfolio of what that water looks like? So in a given year, about 65% is actually for entitlements, which are basically for all the Solano cities, the Solano Irrigation Districts. That's really what's given for here for municipal and agricultural use. About 25%, which is 85,000 acre feet, the household, you know, one household, actually an acre foot provides enough for about two, sometimes even three households. So this is a lot of water. That's what evaporates from Lake Bariessa in a year. So regardless of what water comes into the lake, it's a big lake, there's a lot of evaporation. And then about 10% goes down into Lower Puda Creek for environmental needs and for farmers that are along Lower Puda Creek. So just to give a little idea, that's, that's essentially how Lake Bariessa is made up. And, and again, this is, I apologize, it's going to be a little hard to see, but this is, if you will, the volume of Lake Bariessa. So how much water? The red line represents 100% maxed-out lake, since the dam was actually finished in 1959 to present. And one of the things that really I want to show you is, if you look at the red line, Bariessa really operates in periods of wet years. So you see, in, you know, going back in the 60s, that again, there were many years where the lake, lake was very full. But there's also periods more recently where you see these drought periods, these multi, multi-year, you know, long periods where you have, you have long-term drought. And again, Bariessa is a large reservoir that's really been able to meet our community's needs for over 60 years, regardless of whether it's drought or wet conditions. Now, to give a little perspective, the state, as Michael said, the state is looking across the whole entire Sacramento River watershed, as well as the San Joaquin. On the Sacramento side, there's 24 watersheds, so certainly not going to, you can see kind of a picture. Puda Creek is what flows in the Lake Bariessa. We represent 1% of the SAC River flow. So, so Puda Creek is pretty small. It's sort of the, the little train that could. It's a, you know, obviously very important locally, but it's very small, and in the context of the Delta, it's only 1%. But what the state is looking at as part of their Bay Delta Plan update is they want to, again, send 55% of, of this unimpaired flow, send it right out the gates of Monticello Dam and Lake Solano, and then put in cold water protection, which again, we'll, we'll show you in a couple of slides what that means for, for the Solano region. Now, the state is very good at providing reports. And, and I say that a little bit sarcastically, is this was a 6,000-page report. So again, a lot of the staff from the Solano agencies, up and down, you know, many of the cities here, the county, and certainly the water agency, are really scrutinized through thousands of pages, trying to figure out, well, what does this mean for Solano County? What does this mean for each of our cities? And really, again, I, I want to point out one, which is a little bit confusing, but under, they said, the 55% unimpaired flow, that means the Solano Project, which is Lake Bariessa, will get an allocation of 25%. So that means you only get a quarter, if, if you have your water supply, which you've had 100% allocation since the project was built for almost 60 years. The state is proposing a 75% reduction in our region's water supply. And so I'll just kind of, you know, let that sink in, is it's, it's not a little bit of water, it, it's a whole bunch. And, and obviously, as water managers, as Michael said, certainly for Fairfield, as, as water managers for the region, that, that's not sustainable. That's a really big impact. On top of that, the state has really come up to the conclusion, or the draft conclusion, that Lake Bariessa should be held at about a million acre feet in context at 65% full. So regardless of droughts, Lake Bariessa can only go down to about a million acre feet, but that's three years of water supply. If it stopped raining, that's three years of water supply for our entire Solano region. So that's a lot of water, particularly during the drought years, that, that's a big deal. And obviously, we, our agency, many of the cities, Fairfield, Vallejo, others, had a lot to say. Obviously, we, we certainly disagreed pretty heavily with why the state came up with that. So to again, go back to, to go back to this graph that you saw, again, that Bariessa operates through wet periods and dry, what that means, if you put in a million acre foot cap, those drought periods, that again, we have a, a very reliable supply that, again, during drought years, we've had 100% supply for our cities, for ag community, we would lose our drought resiliency. We could not handle these multi-year droughts that we had just a few years ago, that we had for 11 years before that, that we had in the early 90s, and going back to 76, 77. It's a really big deal, because that's the, that's the benefit of Lake Bariessa, is it can handle the wet years, and it can really handle the dry years, and really make, make Solano County a very viable region for agriculture and our municipal cities. So again, that's really a big deal, really impacting our drought resiliency. To give an idea, these are all the agencies in Solano County. These are the agencies that receive what we call Solano Project or Bariessa Water, highlighted and read the city of Fairfield, as well as SID, which is the Solano Irrigation District, part of Fairfield Supply, comes from the Solano Irrigation District. And really imagine, if you take those allocations, which are used, those are used by all the cities, the communities, even UC Davis, CSP Solano, and Vacaville, and you basically slash it by 75%. It, it's a loss of, what's, 144,000 acre feet of very high-quality surface water. You know, that's not attainable. We can't go out on the market and purchase that much water. It, it's just not viable for our region. And you look for Fairfield, again, going from about 9,200 acre feet, and I, I think Michael had, had more details in the staff report, it's a dramatic, a very dramatic impact to the city of Fairfield, but not just of Fairfield, to really all the major urban cities in Solano County, let alone to our ag community, particularly in the eastern part of Solano County. So to give a little idea, certainly we're not putting our heads in the sand. Obviously, we, we really want to think about this, of how we can, you know, work with the state, and, and, and think of strategies. So as Michael said, the Healthy Rivers and Landscape Program, I'll go, go with that in a little bit of detail. But also, every month, there's a group of technical advisors throughout Solano County. These are from all the major cities, ag districts, reclamation districts, that meet every month and really strategize at a staff, technical level, how can we navigate this? How can we really better inform our policy leaders, our city councils, our county and water agency boards, to really, again, push back on the state, make, make the right decisions? We're also looking at partnerships. One in particular, the Northern California Water Association is actually all, a lot of the Sacramento Valley agencies, which have a really strong coalition. East Bay Mud, so folks are familiar, East Bay Mud serves Contra Costa, Alameda Counties, serves 1.5 million people. The state also is proposing an 80% reduction to their water supply. And so obviously, we're looking for partners such as East Bay Mud and others of, again, they're in the same situation, and obviously, they're going to have very similar concerns of that you just can't do this for this many people, for, for certainly our communities. We're also partnering with folks up in Yolo County. Again, they're in a similar situation, certainly a little bit more on the ag side, but again, they're really good partners to work with and really have the same message coming into it. All of our agencies have put in very detailed comment letters of a variety of strategies. And then certainly, last but not least, there's always litigation. Certainly, no one loves that, but sometimes, again, if that's what protects our region, that's certainly an option for our boards and councils to decide upon. And lastly, again, there's the ability to provide public comment to the state water board. Again, there's opportunity, again, where folks disagree, or, you know, certainly that we do that at a technical level, but it really is available for the whole community to really comment and, and provide thoughts of what you think the state is doing locally in Solano County. To get a little bit detail here on the voluntary agreements, this is the Healthy Rivers Landscape Program, also called voluntary agreements. And the idea is to say, state board, let's back it up a little bit. Rather than just take flow, let's use a balanced approach. Let's use a little bit of water, habitat improvements for fish, science and funding, and let's, let's look at it a little bit more holistically. This plan right now is supported by the governor, is supported by all of our local state legislative members here in Solano County, and it really builds upon what we call the Puda Creek Accord. So about 20, essentially now, over 30 years ago, the water agency and our Solano agencies actually were in litigation with the Yolo, basically a variety of Yolo agencies for about 10 years. So we litigated for 10 years, and the end came out with what was called the Puda Creek Accord, which for a quarter of a century has really managed our water very successfully. We have salmon that go up into Puda Creek. It's a very good, if folks head into Puda Creek for fly fishing and others, really, again, I think Puda Creek is, is sort of a model watershed these days. For going into the voluntary agreements, the idea is, we, we as an agency, as a collective region, would provide a little bit more water, and we'd also do spawning habitat for, for salmon. So again, we've got a project over near UC Davis and the Solano side, again, of helping to provide this sort of holistic view of things. And then lastly, again, there's a state board workshop here, April 24 through 26. Obviously, our, our technical staff and a variety of our agencies plan to be there. And again, it's certainly open to the public, to provide public comments, to provide comment letters, to provide feedback to the state board of how folks feel about this. Lastly, I'll turn it over to mine.
All right, in summary, there's been several actions taken to increase public awareness. Some of the actions have included newspaper and business journal articles, as well as a fact sheet generated by Solano County Water Agency. We'll continue to advocate for the Healthy River and Landscapes Program, also known as the voluntary agreements. But we do so through Solano County Water Agency, as they hold a master agreements with the bureau and the state, as the state water contractor. There's also the State Water Board Workshop, held on April 24 through 26, where they'll be taking public comment. Agency staff will be in attendance. I, we, we, as agencies, plan on attending the relevant portions of the workshop. And we also plan on publishing an advocacy template, template letter, which will make available for residents and businesses to download from our website, customize, and then send off to legislators and the water board. So I'd like to leave you with, with one final thought. In past water supply updates that I've provided, I've told you that the city's water supply portfolio was robust enough to help us make it through several dry years, and that is because those before us made wise decisions to invest in a long-term, sustainable water supply. What we're faced with now is the state's one-size-fits-all approach that effectively removes the Solano Project as the backbone of our water supply portfolio. This should be viewed as nothing more than a take, and, and will most certainly diminish our ability to thrive as a local economy. The voluntary agreements are the path forward. And with that, we'll pause here for questions.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Alex, for coming over from Solano County Water Agency. I have a real quick question, that I'm going to see if the council has some comments or Real simply, the, what happens to the city of Fairfield if we lose 75% of our water, Michael?
Well, I can tell you that there are agreement, there is an agreement, we have several large water users. And our largest water user has an agreement that dates back to the 80s. And they invested, they selected Fairfield to be a location to do business in, mostly because of the access to high-quality water supply. There is a clause in that agreement, that I'm going to paraphrase here, that states that if the city cannot provide the water supply that they need, they have source control and facility control through watermen from Lake Bariessa. The clause states that not one service connection shall be allowed until additional water supply is obtained. Now, as Alex pointed out, we can go on the market to go buy water, agencies do that, but 144,000 acre feet, good luck.
Yeah. So, in other words, the housing that the state says that we must build, we would be done with that, not another- done with that, not another house?
Correct. Not one more service connection.
Right. And then the other question I have, we know that we've done a good job here locally with Putea Creek, for instance, what exactly is the aim of this water leaving us? What are they trying to protect? Where does the water go exactly? Where does it end?
Well, the state is looking, it's been several years since they've done a round of updates, so what they're trying to do is improve the water quality in the Delta. Now, the Delta is a vast, it consists of hundreds of miles of tributaries up in, up north of Sacramento, it's thousands of square miles. They seek to implement improvements in physical flow and non-flow measures intended to improve biological improvements within the Delta. They also seek to increase the population of native fish and juvenile production within the Delta. So as a retail agency, we are already regulated from the standpoint of, for example, for half the year, we are regulated to reduce our flows from January to June, based on the site of smelt. So what they effectively do is take the North Bay Aqueduct when we're using it and reduce it to half. So do we participate? Absolutely. We, and not just Fairfield, we, in conjunction with other agencies, ramp down the flows to, you know, minimize based on smelt sightings.
Thank you. I think that's pretty clear. Thank you so much. Questions or comments? Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So, some of my colleagues know I sit on a water policy, I'm going through a water policy fellowship with Mayor Hernandez, and so this topic, it's frightening, this, what they're wanting to do. I've been visiting different spots down south and throughout the state that are already facing implications of reduction in water, reduction in groundwater, reduction in the Colorado River. And I know we don't have to face the Colorado issue, but we are now, we're, that's where our water's going to be going, it's going to be going, I'm assuming, to, you know, maybe to our neighbors down south. And so, and you're, we're talking about buying, if we would have to buy water, but I feel like, if anybody would have to buy water, they would end up having to come up here to buy water, and it's like, so then where would we be able to turn to? It's just, I just, I'm looking forward to, I guess, having our city advocate and try to stand up and be a voice for what's going on, because I've seen how other Californians live who don't have access to clean and fresh water, and the implications of just not having access, and the fights that go on with water rights. It's complex, it's layered, and we have, we are so fortunate, like Michael, you said we have such a robust water supply, and it's really scary to think of what that could look like. And when was this, when is this supposed to be implemented, or when are they looking to?
Absolutely. It's sort of a slow-moving train, but they're rolling it out probably into late this year or early next year. Now, it's a regulatory process, it'll probably take a little bit longer, but it's not that long. So again, but that's what the state is looking at, end of this year, maybe into early next year.
Go ahead, Councilman McCarroll.
Yeah, my question for Mike and Alex, so if this is fought up in Sacramento, I mean, how long can this go? I mean, I've talked to a couple people, said maybe it's going to take a little while if the fight continues. So in reality, what, I mean, what do you think?
I mean, I personally think it's going to be drawn out. I mean, the regulatory process, there's going to be appeals, I mean, we need to gear up from the standpoint of, could we be engaged indirectly, maybe, in a lawsuit between the agencies?
Right.
So our budget reflects an increase in legal fees next budget cycle.
I can tell you that, Councilman, that on the Solano County Water Agency, that we have had a closed session discussing litigation, hasn't been a decision yet that we'd make public, but we have spoken about it, because this is a serious threat to our agriculture. Agriculture would be dead, and that is a major, major thing to all of us, as we know, and we make food for around the world and around this country, so, yeah. Yeah. Councilman Doug?
Yeah, mine's more of an observation. I just would like to point out that how things happen is a lot of the reasons a lot of people are here today in this chamber, and we're lucky that it's full and they get to see this presentation, because each of you can carry this message out, and it's a very important message, because we're losing our water in Solano County, they're talking about losing up to 75% of our water, just want to make that clear. And none of us feel that that's sustainable, we have proof that that's not good, and look at all the people in here that is going to help us fight this and help us with getting this word out. Each of you tell a person, they tell a person, and that's how we're really going to make a difference, and so we're fortunate that you guys are all here today. The other thing is, is we were looking in the future of progress in turning our beautiful Susun Valley into the wine, all the beautiful wine-producing soil out there, and all that will be gone. So economically, we're going to take a big hit, too, if they take this water. And it's, from what my understanding is, they just were spending a lot of money on the resort they were going to be building at Lake Bariessa, have you heard on that? Is that, is that still going ahead with this, or are they going to put the kibosh to that as well?
I mean, I haven't heard, has anybody engaged the, I mean, Lake, it's important to recognize that Lake Bariessa is in Napa County.
I understand, but...
I don't know if they've engaged the agency at all with any of the resort.
Yeah, maybe I'll touch, so there has not been a ton of engagement, I know Napa County struggled a little bit to get concessionaires, I think there's been a few kind of the existing concessionaires, but I would say at this point, we're not aware of any major, I know Napa County has a vision, but haven't quite seen that implemented to the scale they're looking at yet.
Is Napa County going to be in this fight with us?
You know, we probably need to educate them, you know, it's, again, we haven't, usually we meet, and the technical staff usually meet twice a year with our Napa County counterparts, this would be a great, you know, really a great topic to engage our Napa County folks.
I think it would. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Tonason?
Yeah, so it sounds like it's going to be prolonged through the courts, but can it be stopped, or can it be reduced, or can, you know, can those numbers change?
I guess the attorney here, sitting next to me, would like to hear, anything's negotiable, right? But, I mean, that's the intent, is to be able to have a balance between a pay-in-water, cut-the-check option, and doing habitat restoration. So on some level, I brought up some of SQUAD's core business functions, because they do engage in a lot of habitat restoration. I participate directly in the accord, which established the Lower Putea Creek Coordinating Committee. I sit on some of the, many of the subcommittees associated and affiliated with it. We're obligated as a charter member. So they do, what balance, to go back to your question of water, cut-the-check, and habitat restoration, I guess that's all going to be negotiable.
Yes. Councilwoman?
Thank you. So, you know, I saw, I saw online that grid with the city in the 75, all the cities with the reduction, and to be honest, not that I thought it was a joke, but I was like, this isn't correct, it couldn't be. And my first thought was something that I think about regularly, the unintended consequences of, you know, of regulations. So I get that they wanted to, you know, improve water quality and conservation and preservation, I get that, but this, this is, this seems to be an overreach. So my question is, too, and I think, Mayor, you might have answered it, is, well, I think we need a very aggressive assertive approach, not a wait-and-see. And so, Mayor, I think you answered it, my first question was, who takes the lead? So is that Solano Water?
Yes, the Solano County Water Agency, because Solano County Water Agency is involved with the water, Alex can tell you, throughout the county, that's what they do. And so they are taking the lead on it, and here in the county, and as a director, I sit there, and I will be active in it as well. I expect to go up and testify, or give, you know, and I'd like to hear from you guys, if you guys were to write letters or sign on to a letter, we'll do that with staff, and be very aggressive about it. Yes, we are, we are doing that at that level.
Awesome. And does that approach include all of our, there's a list of partners here, of course, we have our legislative Assembly Member Lori Wilson, Senator Bill Dodd, do we have all cities on board, like is everybody on board, same, you know, aggressiveness?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. The mayors have concurred that we are going to give it everything we have here in this county, and so, yes, and that's why Vacaville did this presentation a couple weeks ago now, and so I, we asked for it here, and Michael and Alex obviously just did this, but we, I'd like to see that at every one of the cities, so they understand, and I think the other mayors plan on doing that as well. So it's all hands on deck, because this is serious, and for, I mean, very serious. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're good then? All right, so what we're going to do now is...
Sorry, I did have one person that wanted to speak on this item.
Oh, absolutely.
Nora Dezen?
There she is.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I was totally shocked when I learned about this. My question is, thank you for being willing to put up what you said is like a pro forma letter, so that residents can download it and send, where would they be sending it to, other than the governor? Because I'm, I'm going to suggest that somehow the city, or whoever, is willing to collect the responses, because a lot of people are not willing to send anything to Governor Newsom. So is that something you'd be willing to do?
Yeah, we'll figure out, I mean, there's public comment that needs to be addressed to the Water Board, but when we put the template together, we'll, it'll be, just fill out your name, and it'll be, you don't need to decide who to send it to.
Okay, cool. So you're just going to collect it, and so you have all the...
We'll publish it, so you can download, fill in the name, it'll have some language there, that's, in advocacy letters that we engage in with lobbyists, they make it very easy, we're going to model it after that, so you can just put your name on it, it'll have an address, you can change the language if you want.
Thank you.
And nor the, the Water Board is where we will be, they are not elected people, they are appointed by the governor, and they are making these laws, these rules, and they're the ones who are saying they're going to take 75% of our water.
Yep.
So what do you do with unelected people? You do have to, there has to be some pressure by the electeds with the governor, but for the people, we'll get it to the Water Board, so they understand that we mean business.
Okay, super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Madam Clerk, on this? All right. Then we're going to go ahead right now and quickly move to item four.
Okay.
Okay?
Minute action, approving mayor's appointments to the youth commission. So I'd like to call up, well, in a minute, first, we have to vote on it.
Okay.
So I need a motion for someone to approve the appointments.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
Thank you. And so I would like to...
And do we have any public speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, I do not. I'd like to call up Mahi Ehr, Gerdis Atwal, and Diego Cortez.
And I just want to say, before you start, Karen, thank you very much. Doris and I were on the interview panel, and these, these young, young folks are fantastic, and they all want to be doctors.
I'm going to have you all raise your right hand and repeat after me, and then, before you leave, I need you to each sign your oath, and then I have certificates for you, some jelly beans, and city pins. Okay. First, we'll just say our names. I, Mahi Ehr.
I, Gerdis.
Okay, and then now together, do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
We do want to get a picture.
Oh, yeah, we will, absolutely, sign. Go ahead and have a sign.
Go ahead and sign. Yeah, just there, and then I'll sign the bottom.
Tell your brother I said hello.
Thank you.
And then before you leave, I'll give you these.
Item number five, I'll put on your show.
Oh, okay.
All right, all ready? Ready, and one, two, three, do one more. Ready, one, two, three. All right, perfect. Hold on, hold on.
One more. One, two, and three. Lots of beautiful smiles.
Yeah, congratulations.
Oh, and I have some chipping bits.
Bill, she says one, two, three, way better than you.
Yes.
Oh, and their candy. Am I being nosey or what? Mama, who's not? And you're an old hat.
Yeah.
Where did your pin go? Oh, there it is. Congratulations, dear.
So now, we're going to go to public comments. Madam Clerk?
Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise-your-hand feature, or press star nine on your phone if you're online. And then, were you going to limit the...
Yes. So we, because we have so many speakers, you'll have one minute to speak, and please, or you can have none, if you'd like that. I'm just kidding, but one minute, we are serious about it, because we have so many, so listen for the clerk to call your name, and please don't disrupt the people who are talking, so we can focus on what they're saying. Thank you.
And I'm going to call them in order of how they were received, although this first person asked if she could speak first, because she has to go to work, Gwen Lang, and to be followed by Deanna Thomas.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
On behalf of City Church, I joined this church seven years ago. I'm a recovering drug and alcoholic, I have almost 10 years sober. I am a supportive of City Church. I'm very appalled by what has been done to City Church. I've sponsored several successful sisters in that church. That program has been running for 17 years with success. It is very unruly that these people were put out. Some of us offered to house them. Some of us offered to house them so they would not be back on the city streets of Fairfield. I came to City Church not knowing where I belonged, but with Pastor Scott Mulvey-
You have ten seconds.
And Pastor Deborah brought my faith in God back, and I would wish that you would bring back City Church schooling.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you again not to clap. Thank you.
Next speaker is Deanna Thomas, to be followed by Lori Brown.
We're supposed to come up together, this is my wife. After sixteen years in prison, I got out and I met my wife here in Fairfield. She was homeless, and she was an alcoholic. She's no longer this. And we was homeless for a while, we had to live in a van. But then we found City Church, and Pastor Scott had the parking sleep, so we, this was a safe place without being bothered. So we stayed there, and as time went on, we stayed homeless for about a year and a half. They gave us showers, they helped us in many different ways, gave us food, we seen what they were doing for the community. We see, my wife, if it wasn't for that, if it was time she got sick, she could've died. They have a hospital there and a doctor, so she went to get the, the, to see the doctor there. I have high blood pressure, I seen the doctor there. We got showers, we would sleep there, go in and eat.
Ten seconds.
But what I'm saying is, it's a lot of people need that place, and they are good people, and we would appreciate that you all would stand for City Church. Thank you very much.
Does your wife want to speak?
Uh, she was, she was supposed to speak, and I was supposed to speak, so I was gonna say her time too.
Oh, she doesn't wanna speak?
She does, we, she does, this is what she wanna say. Because of City Church, we're not in the streets anymore, we have a apartment, two-bedroom apartment, she was able to get her son back. My friend over here, my best friend, James over here, he gave us a van to sleep in because our other van broke down. It is good people there, and it is a good program. Please don't shut that down. That's all that we would ask.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Lori Brown, to be followed by Louise Bray.
Yeah? Hi, my name is Lori. I came to City Church thirteen years ago, tried to kill myself, and on the third day that the place that they were keeping me, City Church called me and they told me to come stay with them. I've been with them ever since, earned life on life's terms. I've learned compassion, I've learned helping people, and I've seen them save so many lives. And I, I just want to say, you know, you see those commercials about human kindness on TV? We have a human kindness person right there. Scott Mulvey. And that's all for right now.
Thank you.
Please.
Yeah. Next is Louise Bray, to be followed by Tanya Van Hook.
I'm gonna read really fast, because I have two pages. Ladies and gentlemen and esteemed guests, life often leads us down winding paths through valleys of struggle and peaks of triumph. Today I stand before you, a living testament to the resilience of human spirit and the power of community. Not long ago, I found myself homeless, the weight of stage-four cancer pressed upon me, threatening my hope of a future with my family. But then like a light in the darkness, City Church reached out. They didn't just offer a roof over my head, they offered a lifeline, a chance to rebuild, to heal, and to find hope once more. I embarked on a journey through City Church program, my heart heavy and uncertain. These walls witnessed my tears, my laughter, and my unwavering determination. And when it came time, I stepped into the world not merely as a survivor, but a conqueror.
You have ten seconds.
Temporary housing became a sanctuary, a place where I could breathe, where I could dream. My dear mother, her memories slipping away, needed me more than ever.
Your time is up. If you'd like, you can leave your letter and we can-
Okay.
If you'd like, and we'll take copies of it, and-
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is Tanya Van Hook, to be followed by Stephen Carpenter.
Hello, everybody. So, um, do it fast. I'm emotional because I love City Church. City Church saved my life. City Church saved my life. I was on drugs for twenty-eight years, and I've been clean ever since I went to City Church four years ago, and now I'm staffed there, and when I walk in there and there's no people in there, it's so sad. It's just really, really sad, and they should open it back up. I would, I beg of you to open it back up.
Thank you.
Next is Stephen Carpenter, to be followed by Deirdre Rodson, Dodson. First Stephen Carpenter, is he here? He's out in the lobby? Oh, he left?
Why don't we go ahead and take her?
Okay, we'll take Deirdre then. Oh, is that him?
Good evening, people. How are you? I remember you guys, some of you guys from when we hosted events for the homeless. I have, in July, I'll be five years clean and sober because of City Church. Saved my life, and every day, I still deal with them. I mean, I don't work there no more, but I still come and contribute. And it was terrible for me to go there and there's no one there. And all the people that you put out, you gave them, gave them back to the elements. These people need to come back and get the help that we had. And if you can, please come see the church, come, just come, and change your mind, reopen it so we can help homeless people. I'd rather see them there than out there.
Thank you.
Okay, is Stephen Carpenter here now? No? Okay, we'll move on. Sherry Campisi, Campice, to be followed by Vern.
Hello. I'm here because I really love City Church. I've been a part of City Church for four years now, and what I love about City Church is when I find somebody that needs help, I say, "Go to City Church, they'll help." You know, so my friend has cancer, and she lost her little trailer, and she was about to be in the streets, like literally, you know, and I said, "Well, go to City Church." And Pastor Scott just come on in, took her in, and a month later, gave her a room at a house. You know, I am grateful for City Church. I see all these people all the time, and, and City Church works. Pastor Scott is a great man, and also Pastor Deborah, and like DeeDee said, just go look at the church, you know, and, and please open your hearts and open it back up, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Vern, to be followed by Stephen Keppel.
Good afternoon, mayor, and city council members. Today I hold a coin, one year that I've been clean and sober. It's because of City Church. They gave me the confidence that I could do it. Pastor Scott and Pastor Deborah also gave me the opportunity to help others inside City Church. Now it's called City Life School. We need that open so I could help and help them get off the streets. Do come and visit us, and we will show you how we run that program and how we could get these people off the streets. Pastor Scott and Pastor Deborah have that heart. All these people in here are standing up for them because they believe in them.
You have ten seconds.
And as God is our witness, He will order our steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Stephen Keppel, to be followed by Brandy Ruth.
Hi, I'm Stephen Keppel, I'm a staff member at City Church. I've been there, and I've been sober almost two and a half years now. Became a staff member, changed my life. I've worked at twelve stuffs, the first time I ever. And to get that two and a half years, I run an AA meeting and all that. It's changed my life. I go pick up all the groceries and all the stuff for the food line, for our food line to give away. We're, we're working with hundreds and thousands of people, every year we bring in and give food away. And that's one of the things that helps other people that are homeless or struggling with food because of the inflation prices. We're giving out food every day from one to four, every day it's open. We're saving lives. For the people that went back on the streets, or it's sad, some got into some places, but it's not the places where they wanna be. And I'm just grateful if you guys would just change your mind. Like I said, we all want you to come in and check out the place. We got the pamphlets right there that show that everything's been changed, and, and some of that's all lies stuff. So I'd like you guys to read that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Brandy Ruth, to be followed by Jasmine D.
Good evening, city council. I'm gonna try to read quickly. My name is Brandy Ruth, and I'm one of the displaced residents of City Church. I have been with the church for approximately fifteen months. When I first came here, I came from the streets. I've been chronically homeless since 2017 due to some poor choices. I have been caught in the constant rotating door of programs, sober living environments, and back on the streets of homelessness, addicted to drugs and having no choice but to endure the misery out there. In September 2022, I finally found City Church. And if you would've told me fifteen months ago that I would've graduated the program, returned to a normal, acceptable mental health habits, remained drug-free, been reunited with my family, got my record expunged, got my driver's license, petition for my nursing license in one, working in the medical field, bought a brand-new car, and was getting ready to finally pay the last fees required to reinstate my nursing license-
Ten seconds.
I would've told you it was a lie. City Church goes above and beyond, and they've saved my life, and they're saving so many more. So please, open up those doors again.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Jasmine D., to be followed by Edwin Carr, Edwina Carr.
Good evening. My name is Jasmine, I am here on behalf of Sustainable Solano, the organization that I work with. Just over a year ago, Sustainable Solano and City Church partnered to install a community garden on the front lawn of the church. The Peace Garden of Eden was installed with the intention of offering fresh, organic produce to the church for their meal program and also to the wider community around the church, which is a food desert. This garden was intended not only to provide food but a green space with benches and harvestable food in the middle of an urban city as well as next to a loud, busy street. To date, this install was the largest and most beautiful show of community that I've ever seen with people so eager and ready to put in hard work, not only for the benefit of themselves but of the land and the earth around them. And now this garden is missing perhaps the most important part of its community, the people who are in there daily.
Ten seconds.
This week, Sustainable Solano was set to start an adult fellowship for six residents of the recovery program, which we can no longer do. And I'm not here to speak so much on the fellowship but on the fact that this is a space that is a community pillar that people need-
Time is up.
-for their recovery, for their mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Edwina Carr, to be followed by Johnny Thomas.
Good afternoon. I'm an employee, a case manager at City Church. I've been with them for three years now. I've seen so many different peoples graduate, change their lives. It's just such a blessing to have a place such as this. Right now, it's an empty building, and I feel that we have thrown our peoples out to the wolves where they were so desperate to get away from. They're, they're right back where they started from. So I'm begging you guys, please give us our residents back. Let us have City Church come see for yourself what we do. We do a wonderful job, and I don't think we can do it without you guys' help. So I'm begging, come and see what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Johnny Thomas, to be followed by Michelle Guera.
That's me, Johnny Thomas. And I would like to say, I, I'm not a criminal anymore because of City Church. I got a job.
You spoke already, sir. Please seated. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm mixed up. Was that Johnny Thomas?
Yeah.
Oh, he just spoke for a brief. Sorry, yes, and she'd like me to pass these out. And this is Michelle Guera.
Thank you.
Can you please reset the clock for her? Thank you.
Did you reset the clock? Is it still ticking?
She did, there she goes again.
Thank you. Many cities in Solano County are running on a deficit spending. City Church's program is the gem of the city since it is successfully solving the problem of homelessness and drug addiction while freeing the city from having financial burden of tapping into its own budget. City Church is assisting City of Fairfield on their mission by actively improving the lives of our residents and delivering dependable, essential services. To reiterate, they're community-funded and are solving the community issues and saving lives with no cost to the city. What you have in front of you is documentation of the timeline of City Church's roof issue. The red-tagged notice, which said that there was a roof leak, extensive mold, possible ceiling collapse, these were all resolved in 2022 and 2023. There's the invoice from Pro Service showing that the mold damage and water damage was being repaired, the final roof inspection, which was completed and signed off in May of 2023, copy of the permit of the construction of the roof and repairs dated October 22nd. May of '23, the city signed off on all building roof construction. 2022, in September, the building was inspected by a structural engineer and wrote to Jeff Thomas, the chief building official, and recommended repairs. And in April of 2022, he stated that the roof was not an imminent threat structural failure. I trust that after reading this documentation, you will expedite opening the facility for the sake of the people who are-
Your time is up.
-actively involved in the program and who have been inhumanly displaced, and by the grace of God and through the love of Jesus Christ, these people-
Your time is up.
-have found support and guided through the City Church.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask you to please not, I'm gonna have you all removed. No, no, you can't. All right? Please, let's keep order, or I'm gonna have to clear the room.
Next speaker-
Right, thank you.
Next speaker is Judy F., to be followed by Rosario Silva. Is there a Judy with the last name? It starts with an F, I'm sorry, I can't read the right. Is it Frendo? Okay, sorry about that.
Okay. Is that okay? Clearly, the, the work of the city, of the state, of whatever, for the homeless has been a pathetic, abysmal failure, and I want to thank City Church for looking at the homeless as people, individual people, that they can help, and they are the hands and feet, literally, of Jesus Christ. I find that when you work with a human being and you give them hope and respect, everything can change. When you treat them like a group of people and stick them in a tent, it doesn't work, and it costs, it's ineffective. I also believe that all cars should be available to people. I think having an electric car only is insane because not everybody can afford one, and I think that's-
Ten seconds.
A travesty. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Rosario Silva, to be followed by Enrique Babel.
Hello, my name is Rose. I am a graduate, a graduate of City Church. All I will say is that the city of Fairfield and Miss Moore, you don't understand how many lives you are affecting, including mine, by shutting down City Life School. I am living proof of how much City Church has saved and changed my life and continues to do so. It is upsetting and heartbreaking knowing people are out there with no help, hope, or guidance because the city decided to shut down educational classes, life-changing classes, spiritual and life-altering classes that guide people into sober living and change people. We need more people like Pastor Scott, Pastor Deborah, all the volunteers, staff, that take the time out of their day to help those that are struggling to make it in life. I will stand with City Church because they stood by me when I most needed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Enrique Babel, to be followed by Deborah Lynn McCarthy.
Yeah, thank, thank you for letting me speak. I am one of the souls, the lives of City Church is saved. I was there seven years ago in the program. A little bit about what it was like, I, I was on parole, I was homeless, and I was in my car. My mom and my dad, my son didn't want nothing to do with me, my dog didn't wanna be around me, you know? So, yeah, so when I landed at City Church, you know, my life has changed, you know? They changed my life, I got stabilized housing, I have a job, relationships, and I, I learned how to serve the community. I too beg you guys to open up City Church, let them open back up, because you know what? It is a life school, but it's a hospital for the soul sick, and if we look out that window, there's, there's a lot of them out there. And so, yeah, I, I just, we, we, you know, a lot of people need Jesus, and- and, uh, we welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Deborah Lynn McCarthy to be followed by Virginia Tevlin.
Good evening. Um, I am so blown away by the graduates and the people that I have gotten to touch as a minister, doing ministry at City Church, uh, live free ministry on Tuesday mornings for the last 10 years. Man, I co-facilitator, uh, do a Christian meditation group and teach them how to live in their, um, true identity. And, um, I just really want to thank all of them for showing up. And I'm very saddened by this. I live in Vacaville, but we really do need a lot of homeless help. And, you know, you're doing a, a, a thing over at this other church. They do it every week. They do it every week, night and day. And they have people that watch the cars and they have people that keep security there.
10 seconds.
Thank you very much for letting me share. I so appreciate you considering to reopen it.
Thank you.
Next is Virginia Tevlin to be followed by RZD, or I'm sorry, RED, R-E-D.
Hi. Thanks for all you do. There are five, uh, the Declaration of Independence, um, has five principles of government, um, the moral law, uh, which everybody in government should believe in a moral law that, um, and initially it was God's word and don't kill, don't do that. Um, the, the church is there to help with that. That's what City Church is doing. Um, there is a creator, the second principle of government is there is a creator. City Church is helping people who are lost that need to know they have someone that loves them, that created them. Uh, number three, there are inalienable rights that the government is supposed to protect. There, these are God-given rights, life, liberty, association.
10 seconds.
The government protects our God-given rights and the government can regulate all else, sidewalks, speed limit, stuff like that. But please, uh, you saw all these amazing, uh, miracles right before your eyes. Please let the church do their job in this community.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we're being restricted.
Next we'll have RED and then to be followed by Deborah Mulvey.
I think pretty much everything's been said for City Church. Um, I am a resident there and, and it is all good for, uh, it's helped me out a ton more than everything. Um, I, it's, it's, it's very, I've, uh, they've been red-tagged over lies and it's been unfair and from what I've seen, just, uh, homeless, even children and animals, dogs and cats have to suffer over lies that aren't true. I hope the City Church can get, uh, everything fixed and back to normal where they can help more people. They were helping everybody. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Next is Deborah Mulvey to be followed by Denise Johnson.
My husband and I, Pastor Scott Mulvey, came to Fairfield 17 years ago and little did we know that we would offer such a beautiful, safe place for so many beautiful people that have come to our facility. We have a heart for people. People need help to get off the streets. We are not a shelter. We are a program that help people learn how to get on their own feet and not condone homelessness. We get people out of that state of mind and we have so many wonderful graduates. And you, as you can see by the papers in front of you, we have completed all the work that was required of us. We have not been fooling around. We have been cutting and doing and building and whatever you ask us to do, we've done it. So I'm begging you, myself, to please consider coming to City Church and see what we do. Amen. I'm done.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next is Denise Johnson to be followed by Peter Horn.
Hi, I'm Denise Johnson. I'm a business consultant. I come to City Church, but I also volunteer and part of my volunteering is a CEO bootcamp. We teach them, I teach them, how to start a business, how to run a business. And one reason I do is because I know that even though I may not have lived their same life, it's my responsibility as a God-given blessing to sow back into people so that they can be valued and great citizens of this city. And that's why I'm asking you to open up City Church so they continue to do what this city needs.
Thank you.
Next is Peter Horn to be followed by Kirk Moldenhauer.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Peter Horn. Um, I'm here to represent the instructional side of City Church tonight. Um, I draw no salary, but I came along Pastor Mulvey two years ago. He invited me to, um, to teach. I teach nutrition. I teach, uh, I'm a, uh, an accredited member, a case manager for people with personality and behavioral disorders. And I can tell you, you can see the fruits of our labor here tonight. I can tell you, I also have a ministry in Vacaville where for five years I've worked with the city on outreach for homelessness. And I can tell you, in the last six months, homelessness in Vacaville has moved from 125 to over 200 people. This problem is not going to go away, folks. And what we have here is people, instructors, facilitators, that are highly trained, highly motivated, and doing it for the Lord and for the benefit of these good, decent people that you've seen here tonight. So I encourage you, you know, we, we have programs out there like Mission Samoa where you folks are funding. We don't get any funding in City Church. Pastor Mulvey works very hard to get private donations, churches, mission fields of every sort. And, um, those of us that come alongside and do this hard work,
Your time is up.
The hard work where we prepare them to reintegrate into society, this is something this city needs. I'm a graduate of Fairfield High in 1972 and I've been a resident of Solano County
for most of my life, so I hope that you reconsider your views. Thank you.
Next is Kirk Moldenhauer to be followed by Mary Robinson.
Unlike the state, City Church is offering a hand up and not a handout. The real problem with homelessness is offering hope to the hopeless. Anything you would do to choke off or constrain their efforts is not in the best interest of the residents of Fairfield.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Robinson to be followed by Michael Kubiak.
Good evening. I am the widow of 100% disabled veteran. I have received services as a patient from the clinic at City Church with better care than I have received anywhere and on a par with Stanford where I was treated for breast cancer. They are responsive, skilled, professional. Please allow the clinic to reopen.
Thank you.
Next is Michael Kubiak to be followed by Veronica Kirby, I think.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a former graduate, 2018, and it's interesting that I was here in 2018 because we were trying to obtain the bridge to Life Center. Pastor Scott and Pastor Deborah have God-sized dreams. We were looking to expand, but that did not happen. However, now we find ourselves in another situation where things are not working out. But we know that God has a purpose and a purpose is that we're going to reopen. So it's just a question of time before you guys just say, okay, we know what we're doing. We heard everyone speak and we know because we believe in Jesus Christ and we just know we're doing the right thing because that's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Veronica to be followed by James Bell.
Hello, my name is Veronica Kidby and I'm the gardener at City Church. I've been there for 10 years and I see these people come in on their first day and I see the transition that happens to them. And I haven't seen the city come up with any transitions of any people. And I'm very appalled by what is going on that has happened to the City Church because they can prove that they've done what they're supposed to do. And I am a part of the garden that teaches people how to rehabilitate through healthy living and sustainable living. And I can no longer do that because the people are no longer there. And also, God has given us a healing ailment in every herb that we have. And if you don't know how to use it, then how can you heal? So we, I have been the person who can teach people how to heal through eating healthy, live herbs. And I can't do, we cannot progress because of being closed down. And like I said, again, I have not seen any transition, restoration, success stories from the city of the people. When you pass out toothbrushes and pat yourself on the back, that's not a success story.
Thank you.
Next is James Bell to be followed by Kevin Wigle, or W-I-G-L-E. Thank you.
Hello, I'm James Bell. I'm a union carpenter, 26 years. I did all the repairs at City Church. I volunteered, did all the structural repairs. It's all been written off by inspectors, all been with the civil engineer with the roof. This all started a year and a half ago when my pastor started running for a city council member. I addressed Ms. Doris here and her political movement with my union and was fired the next day. Never, never, never worked again in the, in the union. So, uh, I was gonna, and I addressed her respectfully. I was going to ask her, you mean?
Can you just, no, no, we're not going to do that. Hold up. You need to talk to us about this. We're not going to talk about somebody up here.
Well, that's kind of where it is later.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Just continue, but we're not going to talk about
You going to restart my time?
I'm going to give you your time, but I'm going to tell you and ask you again not to point and get at political things with people up here. This is not a political discussion. Thank you.
All right. So it's all, all the things that you've red-tagged and been on the newspaper and everything, I, I've fixed it myself. So I can tell you, the, this church is structurally sound. There, there, there's, there's no basis for what you're doing with the red tagging and what was happening with City Church. It's the only church in town that takes, that leaves more than it gets, than it takes. That's why I stayed there and donate my time. Every Sunday, you shut down the strike force, I'm wearing hot showers in Fairfield that I run. My wife and I volunteer every Sunday for years and years, three years now. Now we can't, it has nothing to do with the inside of City Church. I mean, why can't we bring people there and clothe them and give them hot showers and, and feed them? I mean, what's going on?
Next is Nora Deason.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Kevin first. Then
I didn't think that was me.
Sorry about that. And then next will be Nora.
I thank you all for your service. My name's Kevin Wigle. I've known Scott and Deborah since, I think, 2003, before the church was even in the city. I was, uh, back in, moved back to Michigan back then in 2005 and, uh, but I had 95% blockage of my carotid artery and I was supposed to be getting married and I came home and, uh, wedding ring was laying on the first hospital building that came in and she didn't want to marry into that kind of debt. So I called Scott up and I said, you know, I'm, uh, I need to get away. And I knew the only way I could help myself is to help somebody else. And, uh, so I came out here. What I don't understand is I know that building is old building, probably built in 60s or something, if anybody knows the date or whatever, but there's a, you know?
10 seconds.
The, the minute I got out here, I couldn't go to the corner restaurant there by, uh, the pizza place or the Chinese places. The cockroaches are the size of my finger. I don't know how something can be, uh, you know, turn a blind eye to this, but then somebody who's doing so much for the city with the graffiti abatement and everything else, I just, uh, pray that you guys will see and
Your time is up.
I know you know what they do for the city.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Next is Nora to be followed by Joelle McDonald.
This city has a reputation of helping the people who need help. It's something that it's done for so many years, even without Solano County's help. So whatever is causing this misunderstanding, please remember that they are doing a very, very good job and a very special job. And whatever consideration you need to give them so that you can open yourself up to looking at things differently, so that they be, you know, we should be assisting them, not shutting them down. So please, I pray that you, whatever you thought before when you were helping people, please think of it again. They really do deserve our help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joelle McDonald to be followed by Jamie Rodriguez.
Hello, um, thank you. Good evening. I, I would like to say that four years ago, I brought my friend Tanya Van Hook to City Church. She was at a very low point in her life and the church opened their arms and doors to her and she stayed there for four years, graduated the program and then became staff. During that time, while visiting her, I also ran into a long-lost cousin of mine who, quite frankly, my family wasn't even aware that he was dead or alive. And there he was at City Church, thriving and surviving. And so I ask you guys, you have the power, I ask you, why shut something down that's working? Why shut something down that's helping the community? Why shut something down that's saving lives? You have the power to allow this church to open its doors back up and provide services, continue providing these services and support systems while you deal with the bureaucratic red tape in the background. I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you.
Next is Jamie Rodriguez to be followed by Jennifer Arts.
Hi, my name's Jamie Rodriguez. Um, I'm a graduate of City Church and, um, God and City Church has, um, helped me out of homelessness, um, human trafficking and domestic violence. And, uh, I'm lucky I wasn't displaced out of the program, um, but I did get a place to live with my friend. So I just hope you guys open up the church again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Arts to be followed by Anna Sanchez.
Good evening, council members and community. Um, I'm going to take a little bit broader stroke. Um, I, I was born and raised here in Solano County. Um, I was homeless at one time myself and received services here in our county. Um, and I'm really, really concerned about what's, what's happening here. I work, um, I know some of the council members and many of the community here and, um, I work with people who are, have criminal justice involvement and are homeless and the resources that I use, not only, um, was City Church shut down, but the funding of two of the resources, the only resources that we have available here in Fairfield is being cut. And, um, I'm really concerned about that. Everybody should be really concerned about that. Um, this is the beginning of a conversation, not the end. I am concerned about the different information that's being provided between, um, City Church and city officials.
10 seconds.
Thank you. Um, and, you know, I, I've started an organization, let's get real advocacy and we're going to be continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Anna Sanchez to be followed by Rochelle Connor.
My name is Anna. I'm an advocate for the unhoused. I wanted to address, um, Madam Mayor Catmoy, you were quoted in the Daily Republic referring to the situation of City Church's living center being red-flagged as heartbreaking, added it could be a matter of life. It was also stated on CBS News that you had plans to go to the church and walk property with inspectors, flagging multiple times on your word. But what's more important than a matter of life? I do outreach, I pass out flyers the Fairfield Police Department has with resources. The first two are not even in Fairfield. There are over a dozen listed, um, facilities in other cities. There have been concerns stated in the news about helping people from other cities at City Church. There are people who are unhoused in Fairfield and have relocated to Sassoon or Vacaville.
10 seconds.
If the numbers don't balance each other out at the end of the day, it's not City Church's fault for wanting to invest in people, not addresses. Maybe City Church is listed on the resource list provided to the unhoused in other communities.
Your time is up.
All right. By the way, City Church's roof is newer than this one.
That was nice. Thank you.
Next is Rochelle Connor to be followed by Ben B.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Homelessness is an underlying, and its underlying causes has plagued our community for years. The city of Fairfield has only intensified this problem of instability. City Church has met the needs of homeless in our community for many years with great successes, we have heard tonight. Serving the homeless is a ministry best left to City Church, not the government. Having worked in the homeless industry, I've seen how government capitalizes on the poverty and destitution of the poor. I was once homeless and lived in my car. I was concerned every night, wondering if someone was going to break in my car, shoot through the windows, crash into me, or the police would come along and say, move along. Having a safe place to stay is essential to stability and well-being. I'm here tonight to ask the council to rescind its political and financial targeting of City Church and allow them to continue the true discipleship work according to Jesus in Matthew 25. Feed the hungry, give them thirsty, uh, if they're thirsty, give them drink, clothe the naked, and visit the sick and in prison. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ben, Benevente? Sorry if I mispronounced. And to be followed by Valerie Santos. And to be followed by Valerie Santos.
Restart the clock.
Thank you.
Good evening. I heard quite a few folks up here in this panel talk about their concerns about water resources and water rights. And these are some of your concerns, and so, these are some of the things that you folks brought up. A sense of helplessness, a sense of fear. Oh, and when it came for you to stand up for what you believed, you had to be aggressive. And I'd just like to point out the fact that, how does it feel to feel helpless? How does it feel to be in a position where you have absolutely no power or authority? No one wants to say it, but you're not coming against City Church.
Ten seconds.
You're coming against God Almighty. And I'm here to tell you right now that God is gonna make a way where there seems to be no way, and you will be held accountable for your actions. In Jesus' name, let it be, so be it.
Next is Valerie Santos, to be followed by Israel.
Hi there. Proverbs, chapter 31, verse 8 through 9 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed. Yes, speak up for the poor and helpless, and see that they get justice." I'm here to speak on behalf of City Church and my duty and obligation, obligation and responsibility as a registered nurse with advanced degrees and certifications and experience in multiple fields of practice. According to the provisions of Code of Ethics for Nurses with Interpretive Statements, the nurse's primary commitment is to the patient, whether it's an individual, family, group, community, or population, who advocates for and protects their rights and health and safety of them, to promote health, to protect rights, and reduce health disparities. Being that this is National Public Health Week, on behalf of the homeless individuals in our community, I am speaking up to say that shutting down the program and services at City Church-
Ten seconds.
-as provided this population will result in a negative impact on our community, leading to a downward spiral of overall community public health issues, as well as increases in overhealth, healthcare costs, and city and government used funds.
Your time is up.
Healthcare is not only physical in the body, mental, social, emotional, and spiritual components, which is what City Church does help provide.
Thank you.
Next is Israel, to be followed by Wanda Wallace.
Good evening, councilmen, council ladies. Normally, I don't attend these meetings, and when I heard City Church, there was a topic being presented tonight about them being red-tagged, I said, that can't be, because they do so much to the community. They really do. And it's just baffling, you know, because Pastor Scott, I mean, I met him four years ago, and I was in a position where, I mean, I wanted to commit suicide. And that wasn't the first time. I felt hopeless, but he said something that stuck out and I will never forget. He said, "When you feel hopeless, dig." He said, "Dig."
Ten seconds.
He said, "Dig." And that's exactly what I do every day, and I see what he does in the community. I serve five apartment complexes for seniors every month, and I've been doing that for three years, and I don't get a dime from the city.
Your time is up.
You guys have a blessed day.
Thank you. Bless you.
Next is Wanda Wallace, to be followed by Karen Aldridge.
Hi. I've been sitting here for about an hour, listening to people beg for help. Homelessness is one of the major issues in the state, and every politician, every government official always claims, oh yes, we're looking for the homeless. We have a church that is helping people by the testimony, heartbreaking testimonies of people that have come forth and said how it's improved their lives. They could be criminals on the street, breaking into somebody's house. They could be drug addicts. They could be doing a lot of things. This church, on their own, through their own contributions and those of others, have helped these people, and you should all, they're coming here begging you, and I think that's appalling for them to beg people they elected to for something that they're offered. So, I think all of you should be working to try to figure out a way to open this church, because it's on you. You are the ones that they elected.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Aldridge, to be followed by Maritza Olmedo.
Hello. I would like to know, how can we help people that are not United States citizens, but we can't have our own? We can't have the church. And the church, without the church, there's nothing. God has to be the foundation. And I met someone, I'm a commuter, and I met someone on the bus that lived at City Church, and he was telling me about the programs, he was, the programs that they have, and he was enrolled in one. He was telling me that they were helping him find, after he finished the program, he's, they're gonna provide employment.
Ten seconds.
And my heart just goes out to City Church. I read all the ugly publicity on the internet, on my phone, but I don't think it's fair.
Your time is up.
Sorry.
Time is up. Thank you.
The last speaker is Maritza Olmedo.
Good evening, all. When we were struggling with our son and looking, you know, how we can get him some help, City Church was recommended, and he was just a kid, and he would sit in on some of their adult classes in the evenings. I don't know if you remember, but it was somewhere for my son to go, and apparently, it's somewhere for lots of people to go, so I hope that it's something that will be able to continue to be opened and continue to bless many, many, many people. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, that was my last speaker card. Did anyone else want to speak? And there are no hands raised online.
Can I finish mine?
No, you've already spoken, ma'am.
Oh, if you want to come up and fill out a card and speak.
Forward. If you haven't spoken already and you want to speak, and then we'll fill out a card for you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Stevens. I didn't put a card in, but I've been sitting here like this other lady that just spoke for an hour, listening to people beg you to open this-
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Kathy Stevens.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've been sitting here also for the last hour, listening to people beg you to open this church back up. I worked with Scott and Deborah, oh my gosh, it's been about 16 years ago, came down and did a summer with them. I work at another outreach center in another city, and I can tell you, the testimony I hear tonight is nothing like I've heard anywhere. The success rate of what they've done is nothing like I've heard anywhere. So, tonight, I would just like to stand here and just ask you to, on behalf of all these people, that you please, 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 please open this facility back up. I've read the paperwork tonight. From what I can see, they have complied with every single thing that they were red-tagged on, as far as I know from what I've read. So, I just beg you to please open their facility back up.
Thank you.
Larry, that just filled out the card. What is your last name?
Ireg.
Ireg, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am a vice president of an organization of churches, 5,000 churches in 128 countries. City Church is a part of that organization, and I think more important, I've known Pastor Scott for about 50 years. I'm gonna answer the why. Why would he have such a passion? Well, because when I met him, he was a long-haired, red-headed hippie who had gotten saved. And a church took interest in him. A church gave him an opportunity, helped him get sober, and he eventually began to run a ministry for other hippies in Southern California where we were from. And that's why he has the passion to do what he does now, very simply encapsulated in this. He is helping the people that he once was. And you can't stop that passion, you can't control that passion.
You have ten seconds.
I really hope there'd be a consideration by all of you to do what is the right thing and join in the effort to do the very best thing that can be done for this community, and that's get people out of their need-
Your time is up.
...and into a place of following Jesus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Bessie Roche.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience to listen to all of us. We do have a heart for the homeless. I moved to this community 18 years ago, and I'm a registered nurse, and I worked in a hospital in the Bay Area here. And I don't know if you know what it's like to take care of a homeless person in the emergency room and then discharge them back out to the street after you've treated them, and they're really, they're not sick enough to be hospitalized, but they are really too sick to be out in the bad weather and to be able to recover. And it broke my heart to do that. My husband and I many times stop and visit with the homeless, talk to them, feed them, bring them clothes, whatever. We bought tents for them, bring them sleeping bags, and the joy of our life is to be able to refer them to City Church.
You have ten seconds.
Thank you so much. Bless you all.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you too, Catherine.
Our next speaker is Hope Lopez.
And I do have a clock, just to let you know, just watch. I came with Scott and Deborah out here 17 years ago. We've been friends for a very long time. Scott asked me to come out. I came out to plant a vision, did not ever realize it was this vision. Thank you, Scott and Deborah. Thank you, people of his village. Thank you for being the fabric of this community. And thank you, people, for listening tonight. I hope you remember this as you lay your heads on your pillow tonight and think about what you've done today. Please, please, this is not a church issue, this is not a political issue, this is a humanitarian issue, and this is an issue that has been put forth, someone mentioned the Constitution and left out the pursuit of happiness. Each one of us here tonight is a few paychecks away from being homeless, and you cannot, cannot ever think that that's not true. Keep that in mind. And also, people-
Your clock says time's up.
I got it. I'm sitting here.
Good job.
Next is Joan Miller.
I was sitting there, and I didn't know what I was going to say, so I'm gonna move in the spirit. The reason why I am at City Church is because I believe in the vision. Pastor, he has a heart to help, and I remember when I first got there, he had opened it up to the homeless. I have been there 14 years, I think, and he opened it up to the homeless, and then he said, no, we're gonna have a program. And then he said, we're gonna put tents outside. Hey, we're gonna get washing machines. Hey, we're gonna get showers. Hey, we're gonna get, and every time he would say what he was gonna do, I would just go with it, because God is talking to him. He is doing a mighty work in the kingdom, and I am happy that he got me, an educated woman, I want you to know. He doesn't just put anybody in charge of his people. Amen.
Thank you.
Amen? Amen.
I don't have any more speaker cards. Did anyone else wish to speak? Okay, and there are no hands raised online.
All right. So, just so you all understand, we as a city council cannot do anything tonight. It's not on our agenda. We're glad that you came and spoke with us. There have been things that, I think there are misunderstandings. I, as you don't know, I was once homeless in San Francisco and lived on the streets there, and so, I know what it's like. I also know what it's like to help people on the street, because I do it all week, all the time. I go out. So, for anybody to think that one of us here has anything against anybody homeless, you would be dead wrong. We're here to help, and it will be worked out. It will. But I, before I ask for any comments here, I'm gonna ask the city manager if there are any comments to talk about really what is, was going on.
Yeah, so, on March 19th, a notice and order was issued to City Church, Pastor Mulvey. In that notice and order, which included the red tag on the occupancy of the church, there are basically three violations noted, and in that, in terms of the determination of violations, there is then a 10-count list of required corrective actions. I know Pastor Mulvey has seen this list. I spoke with him yesterday, supplied this letter to him again in an email, and encouraged him to reach out and speak with our building official, who is here tonight. Pastor Mulvey, you're welcome to talk with Jeff Thomas, chief building official this evening, in order to discuss the correction items that are listed on the notice.
Can I say something?
Mr. City Attorney? Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify a couple of comments that were made, a public comment. Madam Mayor, I think you correctly indicated that the city council tonight cannot take any action on this item because it was not agendized, but I think it's also worth pointing out that this city council is not empowered to take up resolution of notices of infractions and administrative hearing citations. By operation of law, this city, like every city in the state of California, has a building official and a fire marshal, and they are empowered under the California Building Codes and the California Fire Codes. And because we don't want those sorts of decisions to be political, in the state of California, those decisions are specifically not enumerated to city councils. It is a police power. The two gentlemen, or the two individuals, including the code enforcement officers, takes oaths to the California Constitution and the United States Constitution, not the city council. So, it would be completely improper and unethical for this city council to make any direction to the building official or the fire marshal as to the enumeration of their duties. Now, I can't speak to how they enforce this particular law. I am not individually personally involved in the matter. I will say, however, that Pastor Mulvey and everybody involved in this case knows that under the Fairfield Municipal Code and the state laws of California, there are appeal options. So, in this case, Pastor Mulvey was cited on March 20th, 2023. Under the provisions of the Fairfield Municipal Code, he had 10 days to file an administrative appeal, to go before a neutral arbiter to hear his case and appeal the decision of the building official and the fire marshal. Today is April 1st. It is the 11th day since the citation. He did not exercise his right to file that appeal. We know that he has the ability and the knowledge to file that appeal, because on February 2nd, 2023, he had an, he was cited in 2023 for other violations. He availed himself of the appeal process, and all this is public record. He availed himself of the appeal process. At the appeal process, in front of an administrative hearing judge, he came to resolution on five of the 10 issues. So, the city reached a court with him on five of those 10 issues, with another five outstanding issues that he was supposed to rectify and did not. I will further note that if he was not happy with that administrative appeal, he had the right to take this case to the Solano County Superior Court. He did not avail himself of that option either. So, the question is really, again, legally, this council is not empowered to take any action. Mr., or Pastor Mulvey, excuse me, has due process rights, which he did not avail himself of. I do not know the reason why. I don't know, and I can advise him as to whether or not he can bring those options back, but he should probably consult with an attorney. Because these are active code enforcement violations, you know, I'm going to advise the council and all members of the city to not speak, because he does have due process rights, and these are active code violations. So, that's all I gotta say.
Okay. So, given that, what you just heard, Madam Vice Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, just a point of clarification. Did you say that this red tag currently issued on March 19th, 2024, is appealable?
It was. He had 10 days to- It was. He had ten days to appeal it.
To appeal this-
I can't, I don't want to speak for Pastor Mulvey, because I'm not his attorney.
No, I'm asking you, as the city attorney-
Right. And I want to be very careful, because it, and with all, you know, Madam Vice Mayor, you know me.
Yeah, of course.
To answer your question, the citations he received-
Is this the citation?
That is not the citation.
Where's the citation?
The citations were two citations that were issued on March twentieth, 2024.
Okay, okay.
In addition to the red tag.
Okay.
I can't speak, and I can't, I won't speak for Pastor Mulvey, because he has due process rights, and he should seek his own counsel as to whether, what remedies he has to challenge a red tag. And I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to advise him, because I am not his attorney.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process for, for myself, and just for the sake of clarification. So, along with this red tag came two citations.
Yes.
Okay. And those two citations are appealable, or they were appealable, within ten days of March twentieth, 2024, when they were issued?
Yes. And Pastor Mulvey had previously appealed previous citations.
And is, is the, is the ten-day appeal period extendable, or is it unforgivingly lapsed after ten days?
Under the, like, and I hope you don't take offense, Madam Vice Mayor, but-
I'm just asking questions.
Under the Fairfield Municipal Code, he had ten days. That tenth day ran on March thirtieth.
Okay.
Whether or not he has other remedies available in the Court of Appeal or in the Solano County Superior Courts, I cannot, I cannot say.
But I'm just saying, based on the municipal code, is that ten-day period fixed? Is it extendable or, or not?
It's a ten-day fixed period under the municipal-
Okay. That was my question. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand and help us all understand the process and what is going on here. Okay. So, we, so can I ask a question of Scott Mulvey? Is that permissible?
I would not recommend it-
Okay.
-because it's not agendized.
Okay. Okay. That's my questions. Thank you.
We're gonna leave it there. So, if, we're gonna move on with the agenda. So, if you want to leave, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're certainly welcome. But thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break.
And our presenter is Jeremy Prophet, Police Board Manager.
And Madam Vice Mayor, before Mr. Prophet speaks, can I just lay out a couple of things that happened-
Yes, please.
-before this hearing started. So, before you today is a public hearing where you are acting as quasi-judicial officers. You'll be asked, after hearing testimony from both sides, and also deliberating as a body, to either approve or sustain the City of Fairfield's ruling denying the renewal of the business license for Pandaria La Mexicana, or denying and overruling that decision. So, in this case, you're gonna be listening to both sides, city officers, and then the owners of La Pandaria, Pandaria La Mexicana, who are here and present. Totally the mayor's discretion, but you don't have to abide by three-minute time limits. They have a right to present their case. You can give as much time as you want. What I recommend is you give both sides equal time.
Okay.
So, if you give one side twenty minutes, give the other side twenty minutes, equal time. But that's completely up to you. The attachments that are attached to this report is you have, one, the proposed resolution that you'll fill out once you make a decision as a body. Attachment two is called respondents packet, which are documents that were presented by the owners of Pandaria La Mexicana prior to tonight. And then attachment three is a hearing packet presented by the City of Fairfield with relevant information that Mr. Prophet may or may not go into. But you can consider everything in both packets as evidence whether or not they are referenced or not. Lastly, when they came into the chambers this evening, I introduced myself to the owners, asked them if they had additional documents. They provided us with seven pages of documents, which I have, Ms. Giles has copied, and I've put on the dais with a green post-it. And those are additional documents presented by the owners for your consideration. And with that, I will let you take over the hearing and go however you want.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. All right, let's go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time, and Mr. Solomon for coming.
Oh, thank you. So, tonight, we're discussing the revocation recommended-
Mom was very concerned, obviously, about the health concerns of her intoxicated underage son and that she wanted to reach out to the police for help. With that information, the Police Department worked with the Community Action Team and the Code Enforcement Department, and we looked into this. So we do have a report, so how do we, you know, support what we have heard and dive into that? We move into, we contact ABC. When we contacted ABC, we worked with their investigative unit, and we found out that there's been multiple violations throughout 2023, and we decided to run our own partnership decoy operation on 10 businesses throughout the city. And that was conducted on Wednesday, November 15th. Department Agents and Fairfield Police Department conducted a minor decoy operation in the City of Fairfield at approximately 1523 hours. Pandaria La Mex, clerk, Mr. Zeit Iz, and I apologize if I mispronounce that, sold a can of Modelo to our decoy at that time. So was, to be noted, that it was actually someone of age was selling the alcohol, but again, to a minor. The 15-year-old was also present, but was not selling the alcohol. But there's still an ongoing theme of this young child working in the store where it's selling alcohol and access to alcohol. So that's really concerning to us. On November 30th, 2023, Pandaria liquor license was suspended, so that through ABC, they suspended the license temporarily multiple times because this has now been elevated to more than one violation. So they served multiple suspensions, meaning they could not sell anything alcohol-related in their store. But what was concerning to me, when we served the revocation paperwork at the time, notifying them that the city was interested in suspending the license due to these law violations, again, it was the 15-year-old on site operating behind the counter. So even after all these attempts and after all these contacts, nothing has changed, and that's very concerning, not only to the public health and safety, but also we have a minor working at a liquor store and selling alcohol. What are the laws, what have been violated, and why we're looking at this revocation and recommending this is, again, obviously, the sales to minors on three times that have been confirmed. This does not count for all the alcohol that has potentially been sold, and we're only assuming that, but because of the facts that line up in our decoy operations, that has supported that. So we also have minor employees, meaning underage employees, 18 and below, selling alcohol there. So we have another two violations that have been confirmed. And also, California Penal Code 27.1 is the crime of apparent guardian fail to provide reasonable supervision and enforcement of their child while they should be in school. And then child labor laws. You have a person, and I understand this is a family-run business, but everybody knows when you get a liquor license, the responsibility that comes with a family-run business and the responsibility of keeping our family and our children and our loved ones safe. This has not been followed in the past year that we know of and supported by these facts. Again, staff recommendation is to deny the renewal of the business license. Reason why this is a denial is they're up for renewing their license. So this is not a revocation in the middle of a license. They were due in December to renew their license, and based off the facts that we found in 2023, our recommendation was to deny that. I do, and I respectfully understand that Mr. Sala, in his arguments, strictly stated about medical conditions, but at no point in time had the ABC Agents or the Fairfield PD or anybody involved. That was not stated before. I still don't think that's a valid argument, but I have some sympathy for if you're dealing with some medical issues, but we all know that we should employ adults to sell alcohol. So that is not a valid reason for what has been going on for the last year. So those are the facts. If you have any questions?
I think that what we'll do is, I timed you, and you're about nine minutes, so I'm going to give nine minutes to the store owners, whoever wants to speak. You have nine minutes, and then we'll ask questions at that time. Does this sound all right? Okay. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jimmy Sala, and as my daughter speak, I'll explain to you guys.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Raya Sala. I'm speaking on behalf of my dad, and I'm also an employer at Pandaria La Mexicana. And also to state that the minor that was working at the cashier, Osama, my brother, he is not working no more at the store, and we are very sorry that we had so many violations, but it's because of my dad. He's very sick, especially 23 and 2022. His diabetes has been very, very bad, and he's running errands for the store, going to the hospital. He has no one to help. We also had Aziz, Mr. Aziz, working for us. He's our uncle. He only was working for a few minutes. Yeah, he just helped around, that's it. And at that time, for the violations, I was not here. I was in my country with my husband pregnant at that time, just to say sorry for everything that we have caused. Yeah, we feel very guilty. We just want another chance to prove to you guys we could do better. We're not hiring no more minors. We're working very hard to be more better than we were before.
We've been in business left almost like 27 years.
Yeah, almost in business for 27 years in the business in Fairfield.
Anything else?
Yes, I mean, I feel bad about happen. This happen mistake, I mean, give us chance to prove to you guys we do very good extent, I mean, about business. Please.
And to add to that, we also have my brother working back, because he came back recently from my country. He's also married with a son, so that's why he's been there for two years. He wasn't here, that's why we had the my violations. Before, we never had them because we were both working. I wasn't working at the cashier because I was underage of 21, working just like next to him, like with the products, produce, just reading customers. He was 21 at the time, working in the cashier with alcohol. My dad was there before his diabetes went bad. Thank you for listening to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. That's all we want to say.
Okay.
Just want another chance.
All right, I'm going to bring it back to the City Council then. Thank you for talking with us. I know it can be a little bit nerve-wracking. Are there questions that council has for either staff or, go ahead, Scott?
Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, no. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing.
Thank you. I don't have any speaker cards.
Nobody online?
No.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then.
So if it's revoked, Jeremy, if it's revoked, it's revoked for life?
In the City of Fairfield, yes. Does not prevent them from going anywhere else.
And then, what is the... What is the main income for your store? Is it the alcohol?
That's the alcohol is the main income for us. That's mostly what we sell because that's the only thing that people come to buy from our store. We just sell chips and stuff, but it's not what they come for.
And then, Jeremy, were there, the first citations, are these the first citations that they've received that you're aware of just in 2023, or was there prior issues?
I focused on 2023. I was not trying to doing other cases like this. I wanted to focus within the time period. I did not go back further, but this was multiple violations.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Is there anything other than revocation forever, permanent? Is there any suspension time that they can do, or is anything like that?
The concern I have, they've served several suspensions from ABC, and they've continued to have a minor on site. I'm good with having a conversation about them turning in their ABC license and work as a grocery store and not as a liquor store, because that's the problem. So if that's something that council wants to decide, I think that the issue at hand is the alcohol sales getting into minors. So just to give you guys another option, because I have a feeling what you're trying to ask is there are other avenues, but revocation, their business license is revoked.
As Councilmember Tonneson answer your question, you do have broad authority. This council has broad authority in this matter, so you could, for example, say, we're going to, you know, overrule or grant the appeal or approve the appeal, so we're going to let them have a business license, but we're going to stay that for however many days, right? So not give it up, not give it to them immediately, but tell staff, you know, wait a certain period of time before you...
I guess I was thinking if you suspended it for six months or a year or something like that.
Again, you have broad authority, so if you all decide on what you want to do, I can help you craft language.
Well, but I, you know, this is Jeremy's area. I trust Jeremy, and, you know, I'll let the other councils ask questions.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Councilwoman Panduro?
Thank you. I just had a quick question. I know in Mr. Sala's letter, he wrote how, you know, there was, there's a language barrier that English is his family's second language. So my question is, are the suspensions and citations offered in different languages? Like if they were to request?
So moving forward, we did start at the end of the year. So the citations are always in English, but we have a new service that they could call in when they receive a citation, code enforcement citation, and they offer 20-plus languages. I don't think that was the issue. It was more so them not, like, I don't know what ABC offers. I'm sure they be in a state entity. They have multiple resources to do that, and I understand maybe the language barrier, but it was expressed to them numerous times that this is not okay. They had fines, so yes, they did pay fines, and they were temporarily suspended where they couldn't sell alcohol, but the rest of their store was open. And during that time, when we served them paperwork, we still found minors operating in the store, so.
Anybody else?
Just one more question, Jeremy. You said numerous, sorry, numerous ABC suspensions?
Yes, there's two that I know of on record because they're in the process of elevating the next step for, so they have a process. Every violation now becomes, because it's multiple violations, they stack up and become more aggravated, I guess. I don't know, I'm not fully aware of ABC's, but they did serve multiple suspensions. While they were in violation a month prior, they were found in violation a month later before the admin process that initiated the suspensions, if that makes sense.
On top of our decoy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And just to clarify, one other thing, and again, I respect, this is their livelihood, but I also respect that the health and safety of our youth. The one avenue is if it is revoked, they don't lose their liquor license. We don't have that jurisdiction, right? So their business theoretically is not completely wasted. It just would not be in the City of Fairfield. Does that make sense? I'm just trying to, so you guys understand, because I understand the compassion that council has and the livelihood that we're impacting here is, it's tough. We get stuck in tough positions in code enforcement. We look at the facts, and we try to do what's right for our entire community. So yes, this could be a stiff penalty, but they do have the luxury of moving to another location. I hope they change their ways in that city, but it's not acceptable in Fairfield, so.
Councilwoman Williams?
Still processing, but so, help me understand. So you got these violations, this continued on. At what point did you say, okay, my daughter's back, she's managing the store? Like, when did you kind of reset things?
Right after I came back, because my brother came before me in 2023, in the, before that, the time that they got the violation for Mr. Aziz, he was in the back frame. And Mr. Aziz is kind of like partially blind, so he didn't know, but he can't see like really well. He has, yeah, he's blind. So before my brother came back from the back, he already gave the alcohol to the minor, and my brother didn't tell him to sell alcohol to any minors or any customer that comes in because he can't see that well. So he's only there just like to see if nobody robs our store or any thefts comes in and does any bad. That's all he was there for.
Councilman Vacaro?
Yeah, I think we're all... I think my concern is that having worked with young people, you know, in the court schools who had alcohol problems, okay, like major, to me, it was kind of hard to see that, especially kids that are 14, 15 years old. And I see that some of the people here are about that age. That's scary to me. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I had to send, you know, have somebody come or a family member or a police officer or somebody coming to my school and say, hey, you know, you need to take them home. So, I mean, I feel for your business, but I also, like Jeremy was saying, you know, the health and welfare of our young people is in play. Again, you have broad authority. So if you all decide on what you want to do, I can help you craft language.
Well, but I, you know, this is Jeremy's area. I trust Jeremy, and, you know, I'll let the other councils ask questions.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Councilwoman Pandora?
Thank you. I just had a quick question. I know in Mr. Sala's letter, he wrote how, you know, there was, there's a language barrier, that English is his family's second language. So my question is, are the suspensions and citations offered in different languages? Like if they were to request?
So moving forward, we did start at the end of the end of the year. So the citations are always in English, but we have a new service that they could call in when they receive a citation, code enforcement citation, and they offer 20-plus languages. I don't think that was the issue. It was more so them not, like, I don't know what ABC offers. I'm sure they be in a state entity. They have multiple resources to do that. And I understand maybe the language barrier, but it was expressed in them numerous times that this is not okay. They had fines. So yes, they did pay fines, and they were temporarily suspended where they couldn't sell alcohol, but the rest of their store was open. And during that time, when we served them paperwork, we still found minors operating in the store.
Anybody else?
Just one more question, Jeremy. You said numerous, sorry, numerous ABC suspensions?
Yes, there's two that I know of on record because they're in the process of elevating the next step for, so they have a process. Every violation now becomes, because it's multiple violations, they stack up and become more aggravated, I guess. I don't know. I'm not fully aware of ABC's, but they did serve multiple suspensions. While they were in violation a month prior, they were found in violation a month later before the admin process that initiated the suspensions, if that makes sense.
On top of our decoy?
Yeah. Okay, thanks. And just to clarify one other thing, and again, I respect this is their livelihood, but I also respect that the health and safety of our youth. The one avenue is if it is revoked, they don't lose their liquor license. We don't have that jurisdiction, right? So their business theoretically is not completely wasted. It just would not be in the City of Fairfield. Does that make sense? I'm just trying to, so you guys understand, because I understand the compassion that council has and the livelihood that we're impacting here is, it's tough. We get stuck in tough positions in code enforcement. We look at the facts, and we try to do what's right for our entire community. So yes, this could be a stiff penalty, but they do have the luxury of moving to another location. I hope they change their ways in that city, but it's not acceptable in Fairfield. So.
Councilwoman Williams?
Still processing, but so, help me understand. So you got these violations, this continued on. At what point did you say, okay, my daughter's back, she's managing the store? Like, when did you kind of reset things?
Right after I came back, because my brother came before me in 2023, before that. The time that they got the violation for Mr. Aziz, he was in the back frame. And Mr. Aziz is kind of like partially blind, so he didn't know, but he can't see like really well. He has, yeah, he's blind. So before my brother came back from the back, he already gave the alcohol to the minor, and my brother didn't tell him to sell alcohol to any minors or any customer that comes in because he can't see that well. So he's only there just like to see if nobody robs our store or any thefts comes in and does any bad. That's all he was there for.
Councilman Vacaro?
I think my concern is that having worked with young people, you know, in the court schools who had alcohol problems, okay, like major, to me, it was kind of hard to see that, especially kids that are 14, 15 years old. And I see that some of the people here are about that age. That's scary to me. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I had the sense, you know, have somebody come or a family member or a police officer or somebody come to my school and say, hey, you know, you need to take them home. So, I mean, I feel for your business, but I also, like Jeremy was saying, you know, the health and welfare of our young people is in play here. So that's my concern.
Thank you. Councilman Doug?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. When we apply for these liquor licenses, I at one time was going to open up a cocktail lounge. And so I know that it's extensive even to get the sales license, and the rules are stated in there. There's even a test, if I recall, that you have to take. So I'm not, I don't feel that there's a misunderstanding on what, excuse me, on what right and wrong is, because it's extensive to get these liquor licenses and to sell. And they're pretty, I mean, it's in red, bold light, you know, what you can and cannot do. I've seen them. So, and, you know, sometimes a mistake in this situation could happen, you know, the sick in the back and the son accidentally sold. But we got five total alcohol violations that we know of in the 23 years. So on top of some of the other stuff. So I don't think, and I think we have to have a consistency here. I've been on the dais for a little over a year, and we've already had another case like this that had to do with minors. And as far as the consistency goes, we need to back our officers. And I think that you guys did a great job, Mr. Prophet, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, anything? No?
I really don't have anything to add other than the fact that it is, in my opinion, a disturbing lack of responsibility when it comes to selling alcohol to underage kids more than once. That is disturbing to me, and it should be disturbing to you as well. And so I am just, I mean, I would perhaps entertain, like Jeremy Prophet said, maybe, you know, having a license where you can do like a grocery store or something like that. But in all honesty and with all due compassion, I'm going to say alcohol is gone. That's it.
All right. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion if we're ready to do something. If anybody wants to make a motion.
I'll, yeah, I'll turn that into a motion to deny or overrule the appeal.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. That was unanimous, to deny the appeal.
We need one more chance. I mean, give us chance to prove to you guys, I mean, never happen again. I mean, I'm going to handle my business by myself.
We understand, and we are compassionate that we've made a decision.
Only the business I have, and I have a big family.
You will still have your liquor license. You can go to another city, but not here in Fairfield anymore.
Fairfield is my town. I've been a long time in Fairfield.
I'm sorry, but we've denied that. Thank you.
I mean...
Is there like anything else we could do other than like not work in Fairfield?
Mr. City Attorney, since we've denied the appeal, there's nothing else they can do, or is there...
They can't get a business license under this company's name. They can't run the business without a business license, or they can't get a compliance with our laws.
And there's no appeal above us?
I can advise them on that.
We're adjourned.
Where's the mouse?